... to Granger, because like family, Granger's got our back. Call, click Granger dot com, or stop by to see for yourself. Granger, for the ones who get it done.
Make education your new resolution in 2020. Wilmington University is ready to help you get into class this January.
Pick your perfect program for more than 200 degrees and certificates. Admission is quick and convenient with no SAT or GRE scores required.
That's right, and if you have prior college credits, you can save time and tuition dollars by applying them to your Wilmu degree.
For your education, Wilmu works in 2020. Apply by January 8th for savings at wilmu.edu/start2020.
Hard to kill is coming to Texas. Fury will be unleashed as a fearless woman on the verge of making history and a ruthless man desperate to deny it collide in this historic showdown. Legendary fighters Tessa Blanchard and Sammy Callahan. In the fight of the decade, he's out to destroy her. She won't back down. Experience the duel in Dallas. Impact world championship. Sammy versus Tessa. Witness the savagery live January 12th on pay-per-view through your local cable or satellite provider.
At Quicken Loans, our 17,000 team members know that home is so much more than a house. That's because our clients tell us all the time. Hey, this is Jay Farner, CEO of Quicken Loans, and we want to help you save money on your mortgage with some of the lowest refinancing rates ever. Rates are historic.
Good evening, and welcome to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for January 8th, 2020. As we usually do, there'll be a moment of silence and then followed by the pledge allegiance. If you all take a moment of silence right now. Stand with the board for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. I think no special actions tonight. We go into our first session of public comment. If anyone wants to come to the podium and voice their opinion on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none. No minor approvals. Go right into the public hearing. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing on the application of Kevin and Jennifer Johnson, 16 Meridian Circle Newtown, PA. And Mr. and Mrs. Johnson are asking for approval to modify the final plan of the writings of Newtown, which is a planned residential development or PRD. And the way you do that is to file an application for a PRD variance. And the Johnsons have done that. They have presented two options to the township. Option number one is to retain the existing 410 square foot patio, and the other one is to add some river rock. I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. Johnson. That would total 498 square feet of impervious surface. Before Mr. Johnson comes up and discusses his application with the board, I'd like to mark as Exhibit B1 for Board One, the application itself. Exhibit B2 is a letter dated August 4th, 2019, from the writings of Newtown Community Services Association, Inc., too. Excuse me, Mr. Johnson. It's a letter not objecting to his patio. B3 is a collection of four different letters signed by Mr. Johnson's neighbors, James Rivers, Richard and Joanne Marado, Mark and Colleen Zahirney, I'm trying to pronounce these the best I can, and Samuel McCandless, supporting his application. Exhibit B4 is a letter from the Bucks County Conservation District dated November 8th, 2019, to Mr. and Mrs. Johnson noting that the plan that they have submitted appears to be adequate for erosion and sedimentation control. Exhibit B5 is a memorandum from Drake Rizzo, zoning officer, to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors dated December 3rd, 2019, setting forth the relief that is requested by the Johnsons. Exhibit B6 is a letter from Remington and Vernick Engineers dated December 11th, 2019, reviewing the application. Exhibit B7 is a photograph depicting the posting of the property with notice of this evening's hearing. And Exhibit B8 will be the proof of publication of notice of tonight's hearing. Those are the board exhibits for the hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to have Mr. Johnson come up to the podium, be sworn in by our court reporter. And before you hand anything out, why don't you go get sworn in by our court reporter and tell the board what is it you want to do?
So we are...
Do you swear that from that testimony, it was a true, altered, and unverified statement?
Yes.
Can I hand this out?
Yeah, that's fine. If you want to hand that out, yeah, sure.
This is the plan with the additional information about the...
River rock?
No, the trench drain and the seepage.
Oh, okay, okay. We're going to mark this full-size plan entitled Site Plan Prepared for 16 Meridian Circle and dated September 30th, 2019 as Exhibit A1.
So we put in a stamped concrete patio where we had had a patio when we purchased the house three years ago. It was a plain brick patio. At the time, I did not realize that that patio that was in there was not permitted correctly. It was only 100 square feet that was permitted. So when we bought the house, it was actually a 400-square-foot patio. We thought we were doing a replacement in kind, and so when I went to get the permit done, I was told that I was well over the impervious number, so I need to get the variance for that. There's two options on here, as has been mentioned. Option one is the patio itself. Option two would be putting river rock around the front. We have mulch, but we're considering putting river rocks. It looks a little bit better, in our opinion. But if not, certainly the patio is the one that matters more.
I assume river rock would be considered impervious and therefore would require a little bit more relief? Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
All the letters, no neighbors objected. We went through all of that. Environmental studies were fine. Should be minimal impact, if any, to the water issues, so I think everything else is there.
Board questions for Mr. Johnson?
Any questions?
Did the planning commission review?
Yes, they approved both options.
Okay. And I was going to ask our engineer, she had some comments and underlined a few. Are the, as far as you're concerned, the underlying portion of your letter, has he met all those requirements?
Yes, so the revised plan now just covers the one comment that we did have, and then all our other comments just pertain to the recording, so everything's been satisfied to that.
And if the board approves it, that will be a condition of approval, that he meet all of the requirements of the letter?
Yes. And I guess, just the last question I had, just to reiterate for, make sure it's on the record, that when you purchased the home, there was already an unpermitted patio?
Correct. It was permitted at 100 square feet, a small patio that was supposed to be there.
That certainly helps with your undue hardship.
Now, we have an option one and option two, of which you say you can live with the option one, which is the lesser of the impervious service. Mr. Solicitor, on an approval tonight, would we be approving a specific option?
Yes. You have to... At the end of the day, the motion has to be, if it's going to be to grant, to grant one of the two options specifically.
I just want to make sure you can't live without option two, and option one is fine. Because in my opinion, I would rather tilt towards option one.
I mean, we certainly can. It would be preferred to have both, clearly, but the patio is the main one that would be the issue.
I don't know if any other word numbers?
Yeah, I want to clarify, which is option one, which is option two?
Option one is the patio. Option two is the patio plus the river rock.
Okay, thanks.
And one increase, one is an increase of 3.9 impervious, the other is 9.7.
Right. And in the letters, I think most of the letters referred that option two was okay with your neighbors.
Yeah, they were all fine with it. And I don't know, I know that river rock is considered impervious per the township, but it's fairly loose rock. It does drain, so it's not a concrete surface. But I was told all rock is considered impervious per the township.
I did find option one and two in the letter. Sorry, I couldn't find it before I asked. The difference doesn't look that great to me. I don't have a problem with both.
I don't have a problem with two.
All right. And I guess we would, Mr. Solicitor, I'll ask you, do we get formal motion approving option two?
Certainly, certainly. After which, we'll ask for a public comment, and we'll take a vote. If the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to grant the application of Kevin and Jennifer Johnson, owners of the property located at 16 Merian Circle in the writings of Newtown PRD, tax parcel number 29-29-34, for a variance from the final plan of the writings of Newtown to allow the existing patio to remain and to allow the addition of 498 square feet of river rock as part of the landscaping of the property, which would increase the impervious surface ratio to 39.7% or an overall increase of 9.7% above the required 30%. The application is approved subject to the applicant's compliance with the following conditions. First, prior to the signing of revised final PRD plans and their being recorded, all requirements stated in the Remington and Vernick Engineers letter dated December 11th, 2019, must be fully complied with. Revised plans, if required, must be submitted for review and additional comment by the township engineer. Two, prior to the signing of revised final PRD plans and their being recorded, all requirements set forth in the Bucks County Conservation District's review letter dated November 8th, 2019, must be fully complied with. And three, prior to the signing of revised final PRD plans and their being recorded, all outstanding fees and costs owed to Newtown Township must be paid in full to the township. Mr. Johnson, are those conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board?
I just want to make one clarification. I think you said Marion, 16 Marion when you...
Meridian. Did I say Marion?
You did.
There's also a Marion. Ah, Meridian Circle, I apologize. 16 Meridian Circle.
Good catch on that spelling error there, Dave. We know what happens with spelling errors.
These things can happen in a township. They've been known to happen.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 3-0. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I know it may be a little bit too late, but are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I think I saw Mr. Fidler sneak in there.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Alan Fidler, Chairman of the Newtown Township Planning Commission. I have two synopses to present to you this evening. The first is for our meeting on December 17, 2019. We had two zoning hearing board applications, as well as the PRD variance, which you have already addressed. The first zoning hearing board application was for Catherine and William Callahan at 425 Marion Drive. Here are the applicants seeking variances and special exemption to build a new three-by-25 foot one-story addition, a 6x23 front yard covered porch and paved walkway on a non-conforming lot. The proposed additions will exceed the maximum allowable impervious surface ratio of 8.5% and side yard setback requirements by nine feet. The commission suggested incorporating a rain barrel or garden to mitigate runoff issues, as well as obtaining letters of support from the immediate neighbors. In this case, the commission recommended the Board of Supervisors support the application, provided the applicant produces letters of support from the neighbors. The second application was for Michelle and John McDermott at 30 Susanna Way. Here, the applicants are seeking relief for the installation of a six-by-12-foot shed to be attached to the side of the house, which will exceed the side yard setback requirement by 5.57 feet. The commission suggested, again, letters of support from the immediate neighbors and the HOA, as well as a good faith attempt by the applicant to mitigate the runoff. Again, the commission supports the application for relief for construction of the shed, provided the best management practices are demonstrated to satisfy the township are incorporated. And a discussion point that was held at the conclusion of that meeting was regarding the Toll Brothers application that the site referred to as a cemetery. Here, the proposed sewage treatment plant on lot, which is an old system, was among the concerns is that the Newtown Joint Municipal Authority and the township, which someday may have to revert the packaged treatment plant to the township system without the authority's involvement in the design, approval, and maintenance of the plan. The commission agreed that it would be wise for the PC and the Board of Supervisors to have someone from the sewer authority present to discuss related issues when and if Toll Brothers is scheduled on the agenda for this discussion. And again, this was in deference to the anticipation that they were to appear on the agenda and at their request were removed at the last minute. And again, they were removed at the last minute from our first meeting in January, to be scheduled at their convenience. The second synopsis I will present to you is quite brief. This was from last night, January 7, 2020. Our first item of business, much like yours, was the reorganization of the commission. I was appointed our elected chair. Peggy Driscoll was appointed our elected vice chair, and we have a new secretary treasurer. We have Mary Donaldson as appointed secretary treasurer. We all applauded the election of Mary. She's been a longtime member of Newtown Township Community, served boards and commissions in various capacities, and she's a real asset to the planning commission. She brings knowledge, background, and experience that a lot of new people will greatly benefit from, so we're very glad to have her on board. The item of discussion last evening that consumed 95% of the meeting was the initial discussion of the proposed JMZO amendment, the E25 use. As a little background, this is a draft that was prepared through the auspices of Newtown Township to address a new use within the jointure that combines the convenience store use and motor vehicle fueling, gas station use, without the component of service attached to a gas station. There's been some pressure in the county and the jointure for this use to be included in our ordinance, and it was determined more than a year ago that maybe the township should be more forthcoming in putting together the concepts and parameters of what would be acceptable if this is to come to the jointure. And we did have member participation, as well as residents in the audience, and we explained that this is something that it has to fit all three municipalities, and they all have to agree that this is a beneficial use. It also has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is under reevaluation for 2020. We did review the preliminary draft as proposed for the E25 motor vehicle fueling station and convenience store use. There are some items in question, including the discussion points among the commission members, was the necessity of including eat-in dining on a limited basis, 24-hour operation, the size of the building, which will be revisited, all of these issues at our next meeting. And I think some of the members that came from the community in the audience thought that, you know, a decision was going to be made last night. We tried to explain that this is a process that we have filed as benefit of the township, a curative amendment, which means that we have nine months to forestall any further applications for this convenience store slash E25 use. But in that nine months, the jointure has to come up with a consensus and an agreement that we either create it in all three municipalities, or two of the three, or one of the three. And as a result, we tried to explain to the residents in the discussion that there'll be many more opportunities for their involvement in this discussion. I'm sure it'll be a topic that will come before you in the coming months, and the commission has pledged to continue to work and try and build a consensus. As you're aware, when this first came up in 2018 with Mr. Van Louveney, the commission said, "No way, Jose." And their suggestion of what was appropriate for this use didn't seem consistent with the planning minds that were on the board at the time. Therefore, we recommended, and the township did take the opportunity to bring group of people together to come up with something that would work in Newtown Township, Wrightstown, and Upper Makefield. The jury is still out as to whether that has been created, but we've made the first step. And I think that the commission has determined to place this on the agendas wherever time permits. It will be advertised as a discussion item under all business, and as a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The suggestion was made with the consensus of Michelle Fountain that maybe this is time to let the planning commissions of our sister townships in the jointure start to do their review process. So in the end of the day, we have three planning commissions and three townships build a consensus that can best protect the township in the future. This is not going to be a fun year in terms of this issue. It's very controversial. It's very impassioned, but I think the purpose that you've explained and the jointure partners want is the best protection we can have against future challenges to the validity of our zoning ordinance. So that concludes my rather lengthy description of what took place last night. It was basically the only agenda item we had, but we did have a lengthy discussion, and the same passions that existed in 2018 were demonstrated in the commission last evening. So wish you all well, and if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Fidler?
Mr. Fidler, so the planning commission isn't done making a recommendation on this ordinance yet. You did mention maybe recommending that it be sent to the other two planning commissions. That was not a formal motion, though?
No, it was not. This was just a discussion point at the conclusion of our meeting, and, you know, our group said, "Well, why should we be the only ones that are doing the grunt work? Why not share the opportunity for the other planning commissions to take a look at this and see what they can agree to?" And I think it's important that the inclusion that the township provided in this draft addresses various street classifications, locations, area dimensional requirements in terms of total acreage. But if this ordinance is adopted by the jointure, all the land development for any of those potential future uses that need zoning relief, because the site may not fit, or the road classification isn't quite what we anticipate it should be, has a purview to go to their zoning hearing board to seek the relief that would allow them to achieve their end game. So I think the process is a very valid one to include our jointure partners, and I think our commission is very adamant that this just doesn't go in Newtown Township. If this lives, it's shared with our jointure partners, and that's my assessment, my only personal opinion, but, you know, if we're a jointure, we provide for the benefits for our citizens in all three municipalities. So get off my soapbox and if you have...
Well, that's fine. I appreciate that. But there's no formal recommendation that that happened yet. The planning commission wants at least another shot at it themselves, the Newtown Planning Commission, and as part of their recommendation, it may be after their next meeting, after their two meetings from now, whenever, would be to send it to the other municipalities.
And again, there was no formal recommendation, but we felt that, you know, the clock is ticking on nine months. Why not, you know, if this is the draft that is ultimately going to be reviewed by everybody with maybe a few tweaks, I guess it's when the legal parlance is substantive changes or something like that, if there's no substantive...
Substantive.
Substantive changes, you know, it doesn't have to be started all over. But again, we were just trying on the practical side to say, "Let's get as much involvement early on, so we get to the end game before the nine months is up."
Thank you. We're down to eight months, by the way.
Oh, thanks a lot.
Well, December 11th, so you know that date.
Okay, yes.
It seems like a long time, but it'll be here...
Oh, it'll be flyby.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Okay. Board member comments. Chairman, I have nothing tonight. Vice Chair?
Just three brief comments. All of my liaison assignment meetings are next week, and they haven't met for the last couple of weeks. But I can mention that I think at our next board meeting, the finance committee will be here along with our proposed consultant for RFP, for our financial study. So that looks like that's happening on our next agenda. The EAC will be also asking for some time in one of our upcoming meetings, as it fits in the agenda. They want to update us on some of their activities that they've been working on. And last but not least, just mention for folks in Nob Hill and Devonshire that the sewer replacement continues. Of course, that's being done by the sewer authority and their contractor. But I also, I wanted to mention in terms of the fact that there was a rumor going around that the repaving of Colonial Drive and Quaker and Sentinel and Pencewood was somehow going to be delayed, but they are on our repaving schedule for 2020, and the plan is to repave them.
As of right now, that's correct.
After the sewer work is done.
Yes.
That only makes sense. Thanks.
Kyle?
Yeah, I have a Park and Rec report. The 2020 winter-spring brochure has been delivered to Newtown Township and surrounding neighborhoods, so look out for that pamphlet brochure. Upcoming programs with Park and Rec, we have Super Soccer Stars, Chair Yoga, Gymnastics, Art Yoga, Piano Fund, Bricks for Kids, and Super Scientists. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports of officials. Engineers report.
Thank you. We have certificate of completion number four for the reserve at Makefield, the Melsky tract. tract. This was prepared by CKS engineers. They recommend approval of certificate of completion number four in the amount of seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
No move.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Passes three zero. Is that complete?
Yep, sorry. I'm done. Thanks.
Solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our report this evening is a resolution for consideration by the board this evening. This is part of the procedure required for the municipal curative amendment that the three jointure municipalities, including Newtown Township, declared back in December. It says, "Within thirty days of the declaration of a municipal cure, the municipalities shall adopt a resolution specifying the issues that it finds to be of concern, of constitutional concern with the zoning ordinance." And we prepared a resolution, that's before you this evening, and ran it by both Upper Makefield and Wrightstown Townships. There were some minor tweaks made to the resolution, and similar resolutions are being considered or have been considered already by Wrightstown and Upper Makefield. The resolution specifies that the issue that the jointure municipalities are concerned with with regard to the zoning ordinance is the fact that the ordinance does not contain provisions providing for and governing a single use consisting of a combination of a convenience store and a gas station, and that several common pleas court decisions that are on appeal currently have determined that those uses must be provided for in order to allow a zoning ordinance to be constitutional. And therefore, this resolution specifies that that is the issue on which the municipalities will possibly, if they warrant, enact a curative amendment to cure that invalidity. So it would require a motion of the board to adopt resolution, I believe it's number 2020 dash R dash five.
Such a motion? So moved? Have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board? Our time that is involved in this, does it depend on the other two jointure members?
Well, they, it, the time involved in this runs from the declaration, and it's nine months from the declaration. Newtown was the last of the three to declare, so that date is December 11th. So we have nine months from December 11th to enact a curative amendment if the jointure municipalities deem that one is appropriate.
Well, I guess my question is, can either township hold this process up?
Sure. If the three, it takes three to tango in the jointure, and if all three municipalities do not agree on and enact a curative amendment ordinance, then there will be no cure, and the ordinance will stay as it is, arguably not providing for a combination convenience store and gas station use.
And what township would that harm the most?
Well, because Newtown has taken on behalf of the jointure the vast majority of the residential development and traffic, if you were a convenience store gas station, you'd probably want to locate in an area where there are the most people and the most traffic. So chances are that Newtown will certainly feel the brunt of it. And of course, we've already been subject to the filing of a substantive validity challenge proposing a convenience store gas station in Newtown Township. So the answer to your question would be Newtown.
Okay. So in this case, we need the two other townships to really pass this resolution, and we need them as much as, I'll say, they need us.
Yes. Correct on both counts. A, they must adopt this resolution, which they have both indicated that they would. And again, I'm not sure whether they considered it at their reorg on Monday night or not. We'll find out. But secondly, they, all three must, and the two others must agree with us on an acceptable ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Are they, are they subject to the thirty days?
Yes.
So, and there are thirty days from December 11th?
Correct.
So you have a week.
Any other questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three zero.
Thank you. Second item on our report this evening is the board's consideration of a decision and order granting a PRD variance from the provisions of the final plan of overlook at Newtown. The applicant is Fang Fang, the owner of Eighteen Julian Court in Newtown, and she wanted to sort of correct the error of her ways by having put in a patio before she should have, and the board had a hearing at its last meeting prior to the reorg meeting and granted relief subject to certain conditions which have been memorialized in a decision and order, and it would be appropriate for the board to make a motion to adopt that decision and order.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three zero.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
You, managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is one million seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Hearn to give his monthly police report. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Month of December, police department logged just over, just under sixteen thousand miles of routine patrol documented, thirteen hundred and ninety-eight calls for service. Be advised, it's a thirteen percent increase from 2018. During such time, they affected five arrests, two for DUI, two for narcotics violations, and one for theft. We issued seventy-six citations. Once again, our citations also for the calendar year are up twenty percent. But with that, our traffic, motor vehicle crashes are down ten percent. Just keep in mind for public service announcements, black ice, especially this time of year, we had a fatality unfortunately this morning on Richborough Road. Don't know whether the black ice contributed to that factor or not, but make sure you wear your seatbelt, slow your speed, and in particular, yield to the yellow school buses whenever they got their flashing lights on. Ben Salem had a fatality, a critical injury incident to a twelve-year-old girl the other day. So just make sure our residents are aware of that and slow down and be careful. I want to thank the board members last year for our equipment upgrades for the 2019 budget. They were greatly appreciated by my department. And we do have a couple pending retirements, so we will be hiring shortly. So pay attention to our website and our social media feeds for any applications if any of our residents were interested in becoming police officers for the township. Thank you.
I just said one or two. You did mention that the overall, the calls for service were up by thirteen percent, and there were a lot of areas, as I looked through, that actually decreased. So, you know, mostly, most areas from 2018 to 2019 actually decreased, but there were a few that jump out. You mentioned enforcement. There was abandoned nine-one-one calls. That was a number that went up.
Yes, abandoned nine-one-one calls. Just keep in mind, everybody's got new technology, new phones. They place the phone in their pocket, they place it in their cup holder, it activates a nine-one-one emergency call, and it generates a number for us, and we have to respond and evaluate that call to see if somebody is in need of service or not. So please pay attention to where you're placing your cell phone when you put it in your pocket or lay it down in your car somewhere.
Property checks, I mean, that's kind of a good thing to go up, you know, get your checking to make sure properties are secure.
Your officers and my officers are doing an outstanding job. They're being proactive in their patrol efforts and their enforcement and trying to protect our community.
And just the other, only other one that I'd mention would be the assisting other agencies.
Yes.
And again, this just shows how much dedication and all the different calls that are out there that you guys take care of.
We're part of a team. We all work together to accomplish the one mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Just wanted to announce real briefly that the Toll Brothers' application for the Archdiocese property that's sort of behind the building here has been extended again. It will be, appear on the January 22nd meeting by means of administrative purposes only to extend the hearing to into February. So tentatively, the schedule is that it would be at the planning commission. The application will be at the planning commission on February 4th and before the board on the 12th. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So on the 22nd, we're just going to open the proceedings to continuum to another date?
That's correct.
Okay. In the absence of Mr. Mack, Mr. Davis has agreed to do the minutes bills list and reports.
Let's see if I can remember how to do this right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 11, 2019.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Got a second.
Have a motion, second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes three zero.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the bills list in the December 26, 2019 bills list for the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and two cents.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three zero.
I make a motion to approve interfund transfers for December 26, 2019 in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in our January 8, 2020 bills list in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight, three hundred thirty-three thousand and fifty-five cents.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
You have a second.
Motion second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three zero.
I make a motion to approve interfund transfers in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion second?
Second.
Motion is second. Questions from the board, public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Move into our second session of public comment. Anyone that has anything to say, please come up to the podium and voice your opinion. Okay, seeing none. Any old business tonight? Any new business?
Just that there are some, I turned my mic on, just that there are some vacancies on boards and commissions that people can submit their letters of interest for.
Absolutely. No need for an executive session tonight, so I guess the only thing that's needed right now is adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.